...in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen dot four. Save your message, I'll make this quick. When traveling, make sure your shoes have traction in the soles and you don't wear any slippers that are, or sandals that are more than ten years old that don't have any traction. Slide right or no, but they cat like balance.
But you don't.
I almost don't. All right. Number three, discussion of funding levels two thousand fourteen fifteen healthcare plan. We're going to talk about the enrollment in the alliance quality path, consider recommendation to move it to full board as well as the wellness initiative. Back to you.
You bet. If you recall, we went through the verification of the funding levels that AFG provided for us, and that was the first step of our strategic planning. So now we're at the next step, the following step, which is so what are some of the responses that we could initiate this year with regard to those funding levels? And so we, at the last board meeting, David brought up quality path to us as an option, and so we're going to hear more about the quality path option and specifically answering some questions about quality path that were brought up at the board meeting, and also discuss some other possible quality path, I would say, components. We've been talking about knees and hips, but we're also going to hear about MRIs today as well. And then possible benefit changes for this, for this plan year yet. And then following that, we'll talk a little bit about some ideas for funding level responses, if you will, for the following plan year. So let's begin with, Dave, could you give us an update on quality paths?
Let me just review, the reason that there's such urgency to the matters is that the funding levels, again, their actuarial projections, they will change based on the claims experience going forward. We're early in that process. It's projecting a forty-two percent increase in cost. Now that, again, will change depending on what the claims experience is. Experience is? I think so. So, we are, last year again, two point five million dollars, the claims experience, the cost exceeded the funding levels. Year to date through December, the plan's running at a hundred and twenty percent, a hundred and twenty-three percent loss ratio, we're about a million dollars underfunded. The quality paths as presented to the board is a work in progress. It's relatively new through the alliance. The alliance invited, this has been in the works with the alliance for eighteen months, two years, and probably longer than that. But the process that they went through is they invited providers to submit their cost and quality data. To participate in registries, what that means is they report infection rates, they report morbidity, mortality, they, they report, meaning the providers report, other information, readmission rates. And there was a selection of providers which was provided to the board that are validated providers, meaning their quality is, meets the alliance's standards, and their cost is within the expectations. The concerns of the board were, first of all, the out of area people. The out of area people, we did a study of the employees based on a census from PBA, your current administrator. There's twenty-two people out of area. They range the farthest location is Arizona, South Carolina, Texas. There's a handful in northern Wisconsin, Waukesha, Wisconsin, Kenosha. So there's twenty-two people out of area. Our recommendation would be that you exempt them from the quality path program. So if you live within the alliance service area, and the alliance service area is defined by county, that you're required in the PPO to use quality path providers for knees and hips. The cost savings for that, assuming that the same events occur, is about eighty-six thousand dollars. The spend was about three hundred and three thousand dollars last year, and the spend with quality path providers was, would be two hundred and seventeen thousand. Another concern of the board was the EPO, who've talked with the Mercy system, and they're willing to, to refer all knees and hips to the Rockford provider, which is actually an affiliate of theirs. So that, that is on the table as well. So the way that, that would work, if you're with the EPO and you need a knee or hip, and you live within the alliance service area, you would be required to use the Rockford provider. PT was another concern of the board, meaning the follow-up for physical therapy, and that can be done locally. There's slight cost increase, a couple hundred dollars to do that, so that's not as significant in the equation. Unfortunately, there are no local providers, meaning within Janesville, St. Mary's, locally, it's not a quality path provider. They didn't have enough events as a hospital, they, they qualify, but they don't have the physicians with the data to qualify. Mercy, I don't know if they didn't submit, or they were not selected, but they're not a quality path provider today. Their next opportunity, if they qualified, would be one one sixteen. Questions? Yes, sir.
I mean, eighty-six thousand dollars, because at the time Mercy would be down, I had to have forty-three for that one. But Mercy's now on the table, so if I get six dollars for a year.
Correct.
We're already four or five months in the year, so I would encourage that perhaps?
I would agree with that, and we have to, we're required to give sixty day notice to participants under healthcare reform.
Maybe half a year.
Less than half a year.
And also, you know how many twenty-two are exempt, what percentage of them are exempt, could become a lot different levels as far as?
Most of the services, all the services were provided in area, with the exception of Oconomowoc. There was a procedure done at Oconomowoc. Where's it going to go in the future? We don't know.
The exempt employees.
The twenty-two.
You know how many that would be having these replacements that would be helping, so?
Correct.
This year, we're maybe looking at thirty to forty thousand dollars in savings?
I'd agree with that.
Okay. That, that would be important.
Sure.
Come to savings.
I would agree with that.
Along with that, if we start doing this, I'm assuming that we're going to continue it into the next year, so it's already set up, the plans and motion, when we were considered with quality path.
The Mercy, Mercy's agreed to do this through the rest of this plan, plan year.
Okay.
We'll have to determine if they'll continue, referring to the Rockford facility, you know, that's just up for discussion.
Mercy indicated that they're interested in applying for being a qualified provider in the future. You said the next time they can apply is January sixteenth.
I would assume that they're interested, they're even more interested, give provider, excuse me, employers, make the selection of these quality path providers. So it's market pressure that's going to incent them to participate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
And once we start on this path, pardon the pun, it also then makes it, the adding services, now the structure is there, so adding, it becomes MRIs in the future, becomes whatever we discover, we already have the framework to do it, it makes it easier to add those services? Or not?
It's not, it's not difficult to add the services.
Either way.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
You're good.
Let's go to MRIs.
Yep.
The MRI savings, again, this is a provider in Rockford, the provider in Rockford, the Summit Radiology. Their services from a quality standpoint, they have equal to, if not better, imaging technology than the hospitals locally. There were forty-nine, and we're talking specifically about the PPO product, Mercy would not release, meaning with the EPO product, they would not release patients to Rockford because they have the rights by contract to keep it within their network. So there were forty-nine MRIs, and we're talking about outpatient MRIs, not inpatient. So it's somewhat elective, there's time to do it, you're not doing immediately. There were forty-nine MRIs that were done. The cost savings is about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So significant, significant savings. On average, the cost of the MRI through the PPO was twenty-seven sixty-five, with Summit, it's five hundred and fifty dollars. They do the reads, meaning you go in and have the imaging done, the radiologist reads those images, and that's done at the Cleveland Clinic. So significant savings for a small portion, and forty-nine procedures or forty-nine images for a hundred and eight thousand dollar savings.
Yes, sir.
Well, again, with those forty-nine, just people on the alliance plan, or including?
Only the people on the alliance plan. If we were successful, which I am doubtful, then we would be in the short term. The savings on the EPO side is about a hundred and thirty thousand.
And this, this, it was, what was the number again?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight?
Eight savings.
Again, that's a, it's a year.
Correct.
So we're somewhere less than half of that for this year, but going forward next year. So another fifty thousand or so this year.
Correct.
Fifty here, forty there, pretty soon we'll get to five million.
Commissioner Murray.
Is that the only path, the Summit?
There is a, there are discussions with a provider in Milwaukee that has similar costing, that the, you can see the, the price differential, twenty-seven hundred to five hundred and fifty. There's a significant revenue source for providers in MRIs. Obviously, a for-profit facility, a facility can make money, significant dollars, at five hundred and fifty dollars on average. I mean, a reaction from, from St. Mary's or Mercy might be they reduce their price to circumvent. I mean, that's what, that's what cost and quality transparency is all about, is to change the marketplace, to have the providers react to employers and change the market. It's not, it's not a static market. We can't predict what the providers will react to. But one thing to say for sure is, when providers lose business, they react, just like any other business.
David, is a Summit, I know a lot of people, being in, in this industry for a while, don't like the confined, closed MRIs, and a lot of times on these, like a Summit, I don't know if it's Summit.
It's, it's open.
Okay, so that alleviates a lot of the other concern, because occasionally, with the, with the hospitals, those are, the only option is a closed.
Sure.
So, you know, they feel like they're trapped, and people with claustrophobia, you know, so this is also a positive where they have that option to be.
And my understanding is that the actual machine is newer, better.
Yeah.
Speaking with the provider community, one image is the same as the other image, now you can debate, Cleveland Clinic does quality reads, we're not. In reality, Summit has two, two customers, the ordering physician, right, and the patient itself, so they have to respond to the providers and give quick turnaround, quality services, good reads.
Is Summit only in Rockford, or is this part of a larger group that has locations?
They live only in Rockford.
Okay. Commissioner Sotomayor.
So, doctor recommends an MRI to their patient. How do we, how does Dr. Kael, whomever, Dr. Sperry and personnel, and let everybody know, hey, you need to now recognize that, when you, when you should and when you shouldn't need to go to Rockford, because how do we inform everybody, make sure they know?
That's all in the communication strategy. There's, there's a detriment to the sixty day notice, right?
Right.
The positive of that sixty day notice is it gives us time to operationalize it.
And if employee makes the honest mistake where they just messed up unintentionally, they're going to feel some, some, pay a twenty-seven hundred bucks versus five, versus nothing.
Could be as high as thirty-six hundred dollars.
Versus nothing.
And if, if that's a concern, you could put in deductible or a copay for MRIs in, in any place else other than Summit. How, how that would look is there's a thousand dollar copay, or whatever number you want to make it. If you use anybody but Summit, Summit is free. So it's, it stings, but it doesn't kill someone.
Well, I would say we would pay what we would have paid otherwise, so we'll pay the five fifty, it would have been our cost, whatever balances.
Sure.
At least we'll cover the, we would have paid anyway, versus saying, nothing, well, we would have paid the five fifty, so we'll at least do that portion.
Sure.
Doesn't make it great, but at least it takes a bit of a hurt out, I guess.
And the, the range of the services, because it's different prices for different MRIs, the high, just looking at these numbers in front of me, incidentally, the, the information that I'm looking at is confidential, non-disclosure, and with the alliance, they don't want to know, you know, provider specific.
Right.
Thirty-six hundred to a low of twenty-two hundred, and Summit's costing is nine thirty-six to a low of four fifty-eight, so it would be reasonable to say, any MRI, there's a specific copay.
Right.
Two thousand dollars rather than say the difference between the two. So it's identifiable what's at risk for the patient.
Commissioner Murray?
Do we already have pre-authorization within our system now?
That's what I was going to bring up too, is that we're working closely with PBA, obviously, so when the order comes in for an MRI, that information would go back to the provider to say, it's not, it won't be covered.
It's not authorized.
It's not authorized to be covered, so that information then would be passed on to the patient as well prior to the service, so.
Well, that, but there are other services, healthcare services, that have to be pre-authorized.
Yes.
So if I, right, there are other things, so this would just be a?
An additional.
No, they're right, exactly. So for instance, right now, there's the pre-authorization for hospitalization, so this would just be part of that. That'd be the easiest way, I think, in, to catch it, if you will.
As an outpatient service.
If it was an inpatient. It's not part of the whole.
That's not.
I mean, you can't expect the person that had an auto accident.
Yeah, author.
That's, that's at Mercy or St. Mary's to say, oh, I gotta drive down that.
Yeah.
That's not, in my opinion, that's not reasonable.
So with the prior authorization, and they say this is not going to be authorized at this facility, does it then say, on that same notice, or is there some sort of communication that says it will be authorized at Summit in Rockford at one, two, three Main Street, or whatever the address is?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Sotomayor.
Once again, for the retirees living out of the area, did you already factor that carve out too, or not?
The twenty-two out of area would not factor, just factor that in. That would be outright today, I would exclude that.
Well, I understand saying fly to Rockford to save five hundred bucks, or whatever, doesn't make any sense, especially if you have, take some with you, or whatever the issue is. Is there still a way in saying, well, okay, you're living in Phoenix now, shop it around? I mean, do, do some type of incentive that if you can't come back to the area, that here's what we're paying, or here's what it's going to be, just, I mean, just simply say, well, I'll take whatever costs, give it to me, to, to, to change that mindset to?
I would say that you have eleven hundred and forty-nine people in the service area, twenty-two out.
Don't worry about that right now.
Okay.
It's not, it's not worth the push for the gain.
Okay.
There, there is contracted pricing with the providers that are outside the area, right, through the PPO.
Okay.
Stop gaps, if you will, for pricing.
Commissioner Murray?
So, just so I can little summarize here, we're, we're being asked to move to the board to approve the plan for, what's the path?
Quality path.
Quality path for knees and hips and MRIs excluding?
Inpatient.
The out of.
Out of area. People that don't live.
Excluding out of area individuals for the current, to start up for the, this year, I guess.
Correct.
Is that generally speaking, the?
Cabbages as well are part of the program, coronary artery bypass, heart procedures, and that would be, that's required by the alliance, and it would be simply an incentive to waive the non-fee transfer. There has a then, a cabbage in your population, I, I look at that particular procedure as you're doing people a favor by, by giving them incentives or requiring them to go to high-quality, low-cost hospitals.
So we're talking knees, hips, MRI, cabbage, and?
That's the start.
Just those four?
Right.
Okay. Excluding the out of area individuals, as you define? And that would start, once, once for, once full board approval, sixty days after that, after notification?
Yep.
As well as MRIs for people who are on the EPO, is my understanding.
MRIs would not be allowed to, Mercy would want to.
Mercy said no.
Right, so you're excluding that as well, so excluding the twenty-two, and then the participants of the EPO who have MRIs. But knees and hips with the EPO is part of quality path.
Correct.
All right.
So is there a, is there a motion prepared, is that, if I just say I want to move that forward, we all understand?
Second.
Okay.
All right, any, any discussion?
Well, the only thing, the only thing I'm trying to sort through is, and I mean, I recognize the need to do this, is by not having more local vendors, which we hope to eventually get, is how mechanically this really works from a person's standpoint, like, if I need a new hip or whatever, and I've got to go down to Rockford or wherever, with other vendors or other people that have gone through this change, how does it really work to make sure your regular doctor's coordinated and blah, blah, blah? Do you know what I'm trying to sort through?
Sure, I understand. So from a process standpoint, it's all of the communication and ownership, the people on the plan that you're required to use quality path providers for MRIs at Summit. So it's communication, then it's communication to the provider community. So Mercy system is, you know, within the EPO requiring their physicians to refer to doctors. From a process, as soon as you identify that you needed knee or hip, you would call the alliance, and the alliance would coordinate that care to make sure that the imaging was at the appropriate provider. Coordinate the PT as appropriate, coordinate the procedure, do the prior authorization. So it's in the communication.
So is it going to be me, the consumer, that has to coordinate this, or should I be relying on my medical provider to pull this sucker together for me?
I would say that you as the consumer are responsible for your healthcare. Certainly, the community communicating with St. Mary's, communicating with the Mercy system is important, but ultimately, it's the patient's responsibility.
Commissioner Thompson, you good?
Yeah, it is what it is. I mean, the only, the thing which we talked about the last meeting, of course, is when we go through these changes, is making sure staff are fully aware of what's coming off, and of course, the reality is, if we don't do some of this stuff, there won't be any money for salary increases, so, you know, that'll be a choice.
Commissioner Murray? All right. We do have a motion by Commissioner Murray, we have a second by Commissioner Sotomayor. Our committee should vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes on a four zero with recommendation to the board. Wellness initiative.
Actually, let me jump to benefit changes.
Okay.
This is, again, a work in progress. If we were to implement benefit changes, the most logical approach would be to put in offices and copays, or certainly admission copays. So we wanted some guidance from you to determine if that's in the cards or not. We don't have specific data. What we're, what I'm thinking is a copay for office calls of twenty-five dollars. Yeah, the restriction would be sixty day notice, people would have a twenty-five dollar copay for office calls. The way we look on the admissions side is you'd have a two hundred and fifty dollar copay for admission. You know, throwing a number at it without any data, I would expect that to be two hundred thousand dollars for the copay for office calls. We'll just have to pull the data from PBA, which we're working on.
Is that for half the year, you're thinking, the two hundred thousand, or is that an annualized number?
Annualized number.
So it'd be closer to a hundred again this year?
Right.
Okay.
Is that something that you want to explore?
Commissioner Sotomayor?
You don't have copays now?
We have some copays for certain offices.
Okay, we'd, we'd increase those copays.
Right.
I'm sorry, so what do, what do we have right now for, let me, I understand, I thought we had copays already, like?
Yeah, for, especially for, excuse me, the PPO plan has copays, office visit copays. The EPO does not. So, and it's not for every office visit at this point, so.
Right now, I'm on the EPO plan, I don't pay any copay at all. Referring to Christina.
We would exclude preventative service, as guideline.
Right, as required, ACA required. Right, as required, ACA required, so a hundred percent for preventive.
And we'll just follow the ACA guidance, because there are instances where there's charges when you go in for your preventative care, if they're looking at a prior illness or prior condition that you're being treated for.
Correct.
Oh, hold on, uh...
Just a quick clarification, if there's a sixty-day waiting period, any annual number of days gets should be divided by four, because we'll only have over a quarter of the fiscal year. So if he says it's two-hundred thousand dollar annual savings...
Fifty.
If everything went along the lines, it would only be fifty thousand.
But aren't we looking at this from September, or are we looking at this from July?
Well, I talk about it from annual, because that's what our budget is.
Okay. Because plan year is September. Okay, so let's clarify that, I think that's a, that's a good point.
Yes.
Then if we're looking at next year's budget, and we're saying one quarter of it is, could be the old way and the three-quarters new, you know, we have to, when I'll be talking, it'll be annualized numbers from our fiscal year.
Not our plan year.
Yeah, so I have to dismiss through which year we're talking about.
Okay.
Both are right, depending on which year.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to get that out and get that clear. Okay. Commissioner Murray.
So, we all know what we're faced with, and even I believe that the employees will have an increased out-of-pocket expenses to pay for their health care. So, I'm more encouraged to look at higher deductibles and co-pays rather than across-the-board increases. And there's gonna, there's gonna be some of that, there's gonna be a premium share increase. But I think that can be minimized by the co-pay and deductible piece, because that's more of a user fee, right? Is that, I'm oversimplifying, but...
I think that's correct.
That's, okay.
I'm not sure that that's overly simplified, that's just the fact of the matter.
Okay. So, somebody though could say, as we're moving aggressively towards the wellness, that this could be, um, a hindrance, or deter some people from going to the doctor if all of a sudden now my out-of-pocket expenses have gone up, if I have a co-pay or deductible, well, maybe I'm not sick enough to go. That's the, that's the fear I have, a little bit on that. I think that's been demonstrated, that does have some impact. You could debate that, I'm sure, right?
Preventive care under ACA is covered at a hundred percent.
I'm, what's...
That's not to say that there are issues there, Kevin, where you go in and you think it's preventive care.
Yeah.
Let me use an example, a colonoscopy.
Yes.
Colonoscopy, depending on if they find polyps, you could go in at age fifty.
Yep.
And it's a preventive screening, and if they find polyps, all right, thanks, it's no longer preventive. You could go into the doctor's office as a preventive visit, and you talk to the doctor about your knee as problematic, and it's no longer preventive. But under ACA, preventive defined, we have to follow those rules.
Is an annual physical prevent, preventive?
Depends. Depends on how the doctor codes the claim. If the doctor, if you talk to the doctor about a illness where you're getting a prescription filled, it's potential that it's not considered relevant.
So in my case... That's interesting, that's always, as long as I can remember, coding has always been a, geez, a doctor, whoever enters that stuff didn't code it right, and, you know, but anyway, it's a whole nother...
Yeah. The reason I bring that up is I don't want to, you know, throw those colored glasses on.
Right. So if I, when I go, I go annually for my physical. Is that, would that be considered preventive? I'm not sick or ill or injured, I go in and get my annual...
Let's say that you went in for routine physical, and you were on Nevacor, a cholesterol lowering agent.
Yep.
And the doctor filled that prescription at that visit, it most likely is not a preventive care. So you perceive yourself to be, even with health, I might want to drive Nevacor or my cholesterol.
Yeah.
Your lipid profile would be charged as an expense, it would not be part of the...
Because that's an ongoing.
Correct. And to be fair to the physician community, the physician community writes the notes in the file, and then there's coders, people that code the claim, and they wanna maximize an appropriate, appropriate coding for the claim, so they code it based on the physician's notes. It is extremely complex.
Keith?
Just to follow up on Christian Murray, and I'm not saying one way or the other, but there's, in effect, two choices, raise the premium or raise the deductible. Remember that raising the premium is a known increase, raising the deductible is an estimated increase based on the usage, so we'll have to balance those two. So let's say we need to come up with four dollars, and we wanna say one is premium, three is co-pays or whatever, that's gonna be dependent on who actually comes in, could be higher or lower. You're only really assured of the premium increase, so it's just something we'll have to balance around. We're not really comfortable when it comes to how comfortable we will be with trying to give it right much.
Dr. Schulte.
Thank you. Can you clear something up for me, either one of you, and I should know this, but I hear a lot, people saying, I'm gonna go to urgent care, I'm gonna run to urgent care, because I have a cold coming on. What should we encourage people to do? Is it cheaper, better to say no, make an appointment with your own doctor?
Yes.
And is there something with urgent care that that too can be a co-pay then, if that's not the ideal place at all?
I would say that you wanna encourage people to use the appropriate facility at the appropriate time. So...
Meaning what?
Meaning, if you're having, if you're having a heart attack, don't go to your primary care doctor. Go to the ER.
Right. We're talking simple as colds, yes.
If you have an ear infection, if you have an ear infection, don't go to the ER.
But what about urgent care, same difference?
If the doctor's office is closed, go to urgent care, if you can wait, go to your doctor's office.
So what are we talking about, as far as difference in cost between one or the other? If a person can wait, what kind of savings is that to us?
It depend, it all depends on how the provider community deals with that, because you can have an urgent care facility that's cloaked as an emergency room. So you go to the urgent care facility, and they say, oh, urgent care is closed. You thought you were going to urgent care, but it's an emergency room, and it's all contingent on if there's a facility charge or not. That might be anywhere from five hundred dollars to seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you go to an urgent care facility, depends on which one. And it's truly an urgent care facility without a facility charge, the cost might be a hundred and fifty dollars. And it depends on the discount with the provider. The doctor's offices, it might be a hundred and twenty, retail, eighty, ninety dollars after discount.
Is it possible to also have a co-pay with urgent care?
Absolutely.
We can stagger the co-pays, you know, for office visits at one rate, urgent care at another rate, and emergency room at a, at a higher rate. And a lot of times, that emergency room co-pay is waived if you're admitted.
If you're admitted, yeah.
And then you have the admittance fee rather than both.
Right.
So really, the relevant discussion here is, do we wanna wait until nine-one to make these changes? It's a short plan year, or by the time we implement these changes, there's not gonna be as great a savings. Is it better to wait? Which kind of tails into the going to market, or looking at options in the marketplace?
Commissioner Murray.
A question for Keith. So we're, we're operating within the current budget year. And if we agree to make changes mid-year like this, it affects this current budget year, right? Because it, we would...
It's in place before June thirty.
Right, right. So on these savings, boy, that's pretty quick.
And if you wait till the plan year next year, it won't kick in until month three of our year. Because it will kick in in September, which is the third month of our fiscal year.
So I'm, I didn't think, yeah, so I, I guess, just to finish my thought, might not hold much merit, that if any money we save between now and the end of June would simply, just simply affect the current budget year, which hopefully would, would be under budget. Hopefully, or...
I don't think that'll happen, but it'll make the overage less.
Right. It will make our health line not as significant, right?
May have less out of our reserve.
Right, right. So really, the fact is for next year's budget planning for you on our health care line. Right.
The co-pay changes will affect, I mean, the MRIs, the knees and hips, we talked in a limited number of populated, you know, the population is pretty small. The co-pays will affect many people, and you'll have much pushback.
Commissioner Murray.
It's, well, it's indirectly on topic. We've asked this for years, especially when M three was here. And maybe we should get your opinion, because you're our new consultant now, is, and now, don't have to answer me now, maybe this is something in, before the budget year starts, is, why can't we align the two? Our budget year is July one, you know, why can't we align our, I know there's a big transition problem there. Have we, that's what I've been told, anyway.
I think that, that most school districts are September one.
For hiring purposes.
Yeah.
Yeah, all revolves around when new hires come on.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Sotomayor.
Thank you. So, the office co-pay we're talking about here, we're not talking about urgent care co-pays.
But often, the urgent care is an office call, it just gets us slightly upcharged.
So this would be anybody going to urgent care or an office call, and I'll pay as twenty-five dollars?
Or an additional co-pay, meaning moving the co-pay up for the PPO and implementing the co-pay for the EPO.
The EPO currently has none.
EPO currently does not have any office...
In our alliance plan, the PPO, I'm assuming, has...
Twenty-five dollar co-pay for office visits.
So that, that moved to fifty then?
Go ahead.
Okay. My, I'm all in favor. My question is this, though, is if I am an employee, and I was given the chance to make my selection, and now we're, I mean, as much as I wanna do this, but now we're changing the selection rules, does that now give the employee a chance to make a new selection? Probably not, because their, 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 their year of deduction and so forth is based upon the plan they chose.
Correct.
So much that I'm in favor of this, we now change the rules, maybe they would've stuck something else, maybe not, but that's small amount of money, but I can see the argument saying, well, look, I may have made a decision based upon these facts. The other ones seem less of a, it didn't matter what you would've chosen, the MRI and so forth. But here, the co-pay one, you can argue, well, I might've chosen something else, had I known I picked the EPO because there's no co-pay, that was my reasoning. So, I can see the argument being made, and it's a good one, I can't give a good response to, except saying, yeah, you're right. Correct?
I would agree with that.
Dr. Schulte.
I, I do think, though, we need to move to a culture of, if the bills come in and we don't have the money to pay...
Understood.
Yeah, I'm gonna give your words back to you, probably, from another time, but, and I, you know, I'm hearing from employees, you know, we're also working on the professional performance plan and salaries, people want raises, and they don't want cuts, and so it's everything together. So I think this is a small thing to do, but it, for the bigger picture, that we can at least, hopefully, get closer to balancing the budget and not have to do some of those more severe things that I think the population as a whole would not want us to do.
And my feeling, uh, my feeling is, whatever we do to one plan, so if we have twenty-five dollars, if we're gonna add on the EPO to twenty-five dollars, then the PPO would go to fifty, just so it's the same.
That's what I was about to say, thank you.
I mean, you know, because it's, you know, that way, there's, there's really, that does counter a little bit of that argument. The other suggestion, then, I guess I would like to look at is making the plan change on July one, so it is a full fiscal year savings. That way, it does give more than sixty days for the employees to, to look at that. But if we wait until September, now we're gonna lose two months for next year's fiscal calendar. So, you know, that's, that's a, probably, you know, I guess we could maybe do it two months or three months ahead of time, or we could wait two months, July one, to me, is kind of a happy medium. So, I don't know, do you have a comment on that, David?
Let me, uh, let's talk about the marketing, we're going out to RFI, because that intertwines the whole town for saving.
Yeah.
And that is, we are out to the carriers, we've gone to, we want to basically turn, or leave no stone unturned. So we've gone to Anthem, United Healthcare, UANA, WEA, as well as Unity, Dean and Mercy. And we're looking at the focusing on fully ensuring, because that's where we believe the cost savings is going to be. With the provider-owned insurance companies, they have two profit centers, the provider side as well as the insurance side. We've asked them to include wellness programs as well as a clinic model. And our recommendation is delay any, any additional wellness programs until September one. So that kinda goes into the conversation, you know, your self-funded plan changing to fully ensuring September one, and making a co-pay change, now you can make that co-pay change before September one, which other option you can go with, right? And it could be that the EPO, you don't have an EPO. So there's lots of changes that are going to happen September one. So I would look at the change in the co-pays, or change in plan design, as a short-term savings.
But even if we did that and went to a fully insured, our fiscal year is still gonna be July one to June thirtieth.
Correct.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Did I hear you say, that at this point, you are thinking that changing to fully insured might be a better cost solution for us, meaning self-insured? Did I, did you say that?
That's what I said.
So, we're gonna make changes, big time, anyway, September one. The quality path, to me, is kinda outside of those changes, that that would happen probably either way. But the co-pay change is one that we truly look at simply being a short-term thing at this point, because it's gonna probably all change anyway, September one, I mean, whatever's gonna go to.
And whether you're fully insured or self-funded, those co-pay changes can happen.
Right.
Whether it happens September, excuse me, September one, or does it happen July one? Is that your role?
Thank you.
Whether it happens May one, is that your role?
Commissioner Thompson.
What I'm trying to sort through is, we really are talking about a series of changes here, which are primarily, in my opinion, cuts, reductions. here, which are primarily, in my opinion, cuts, reductions, workers kick in more. And we're talking about doing it prior to July first, you know, the board making these changes. And how do we factor in then? Well, we gave, we gave staff one point five percent increase last year, which ended up being how much? Six, seven hundred bucks per person? Whatever. But anyway, if you look at that, and now we're saying, well, you kick in more here, here, here. We're going to raise the ten percent to twelve percent. Uh, how do we wash this through with what we're going to do with them on salary and still be competitive? You see where I'm trying to sort through, rather than, man, understand the pathways. Now, we're talking co-pay, so what's coming at our next meeting? I'm concerned about seeing more of what the pull package is going to be and how we make the changes rather than piecemeal to wash that through. You guys with me?
I, I would argue that the knees hips, MRIs are not a cut.
Right.
And in fact, you could argue that it's an enhancement in benefit, because you're waiving deductible social insurance and you're sending them to quality providers.
And I would argue that if I've got to go down to Rockford when my hip hurts like hell and go back and forth, and my family's got to go down, and I'm in the hospital or whatever, that that's, uh, an extra cost and an inconvenience, but...
Sure.
That's, that's a one-shot, but I can live with that, because that's a one-shot deal, you know what I mean? Um, but when you get into co-pays, that's money out of my pocket.
Agreed.
That's money out of my pocket. And I'm assuming that we are going to seriously look at raising maybe the ten percent to twelve percent on the premiums. Or we're going to discuss it. Uh, and so, that's a good hunk of change. So, I'm just looking at the pieces of money where we're asking staff to kick in versus what we may give them on the other hand on salary and how that washes through. Not that it's going to be dollar for dollar, I understand that. So, I'm just at, the first part, I understand the pathways. But as we get into these other things, how many more of these are we going to have before July with the fiscal note? So, that, that's what I'm struggling with on, on supporting stuff.
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Thompson. I, I will say that I believe healthcare, we need to be more proactive throughout the year rather than just being stagnant and reactive once a year. And so, as, you know, the alliance comes up with Quality Path and adds services to that, I believe that's something that as they're adding, we will look and evaluate if it's good for our district and, and add them throughout the year. I don't think it's going to be just static as it's been for the last thirty, forty years, where your health plan is exactly the same as it was year after year, or even for the full year. I think we need to, um, you know, be more proactive.
We expect the, uh, RFI, RFP results in probably late February, mid to late February. So, we'll have a picture on which, if you will, the horse wins the race. And again, that's a, that's a process, right? Meaning, we might have information, that information, we might want to enhance that. We're out to market for a total takeover. What that means is you have a choice of Mercy as a district or Dean as a district. And it might be comeback, that's unacceptable to the board. We might have to go back to, to, to players and negotiate something different where it's a good choice.
Okay.
The message that I want to send is, we want to look under every stone. We don't have, today's not a decision. We want to make sure that every stone is turned over to see what happens in the end. It could be that the provider-owned insurance companies don't come to play and, uh, do stay self-funded. That could be the outcome. It could be that it's not a long-term, we've, we've requested a five-year rate cap from the insured carriers, so your cost would be fixed over a five-year period. Are they going to respond to that? Are they going to pull that back to three years? We don't know. So, there's a lot of unknowns today.
Commissioner Sodeman.
You say rate cap, you mean like no more than a certain percentage year? You don't mean the same price for five years, you mean...
Correct.
Okay.
Rate cap.
If you get that, let me know, please.
The rate cap would look like...
A percent or two, right.
Eight percent per year for the next five years.
Okay.
Or whatever that number may be.
I agree we need to make changes, but I actually do, like I said before, the change in the path is one that does not affect their pocketbook per se, and it could increase their savings. Different animal than saying, we're going to change your co-pay. Perhaps we still have to do that, because alternative is, is even more disastrous. But it is a different mindset, saying, okay, now everybody's co-pay went up after we set in motion this year, this, this plan. It'd be like saying, okay, now we're going to make a change in your pay. Sometimes it has to be done, but it's definitely a different animal than saying, we're going to have you go to these, these providers for your certain replacements of hip, you know, MRIs, et cetera, so, um... I'd say it's twenty twenty, and I'll always keep reminding people about what I, what I wanted back in last year, how to do, deal with these things, and we didn't, and now we're facing our, our spot.
I, I think it's going to take a combination of marketplace savings, benefit design savings, and contribution savings.
Question?
Commissioner Murray?
For every one percent of increase on the employee premium share, what does that equal?
Only about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So, a one percent increase on the employee share of, premium share is a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Yeah, and remember, one percent increase on the employee premium share is a ten percent increase to the employee's amount of...
Your next question...
So, to cover five million dollars.
Because one percent of ten percent is...
One percent covers, a one percent increase covers a hundred and fifty thousand out of the five million dollars.
Your next question should be, really, we need to do the change in benefit design to make up the difference. So, if you went to a five thousand dollar deductible, you would save about thirty-five percent.
But that's...
And that would be close to the minimum coverage that you are allowed to offer under ACA. So, clearly, I don't think it's in the cards to move to that dramatic of a benefit change.
Well, I, I don't either, I'm just, I, I know from past experience that the nine of us will be debating how much more will the employees be paying next year? So, if one percent is a hundred and forty thousand, I mean, you know, you can start, and if, if the co-pays and deductibles increases equal this much, combined with the fact of all the other variables in the game, you know, where are we going? Are we, are we, are we have another action item, or is this just all some discussion?
Well, what are we doing on the co-pays?
The question, is that an action item for this meeting or not?
I don't believe that that is an action item for...
I would not put it as an action item. I want feedback to see how aggressive we want to be to get data...
Five minutes, I gotta go.
To calculate the numbers, right?
Well, that don't break my heart.
Dr. Shulte.
Uh, it was a response that Kevin said, now, what was that exactly? Oh, you were talking about the additional costs that employees might pay in all of these different buckets, which is a huge concern for me as well. But if you remember that when we were talking about this, our employees really wanted flexibility. That's why we set up the plans this way. And I'm hopeful, maybe it's ideal, but I'm hopeful if we perhaps go to one provider, that we can really drive down costs enough that we don't have to raise premium share or not as much. So, I mean, we're going to have to wait till the numbers come in, but wouldn't it be wonderful if they pay no more, but there's less flexibility? And, and we'll have people arguing both sides, obviously, because some people will want to continue to have that flexibility.
Okay.
So, well, there's so much hypothetical, so I'll, now I won't even go there.
I guess I, I would just like you to get some more information, uh, to prepare, uh, for us for the next benefits meeting, where then we can make this an action item with a recommendation to the board, I, I think would be, would be fair.
Commissioner Thompson.
So, when do we anticipate that we'll get the information to decide whether we'd be going away from being self-insured to insured?
Late February. We'll have the responses on the RFP, RFI by, by late February.
Super, thank you.
Well, then, I guess I will ask my question, then, is if, if it does come in at, you know, geez, we suggest you go to here as fully insured product, then the question of flexibility is, then if I retire and I move to Arizona, what does that mean to me now that we have a fully insured product with local X, Y, you know, that's...
The, the, the carriers do have products or options to provide coverage for people out of areas with similar networks, so...
They know that coming, that's part of the...
Absolutely, that's part of the game.
Thank you.
And if you live in there, there's, uh, one person in Arizona, one person in Texas, they'll have similar access to what they have to lay out PPO product.
All right, excellent. Dr. Kell.
I think that's what we had, um, the, the second item was about the plan year changes for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and I think we heard a little bit about that, which is we're going out with an RFP at this time and come back, um, probably at the March Benefits Committee with that answer. And as far as, um, co-pays, that all for next plan year really depends on which direction we're going in. So, I don't think there's any further discussion on next plan year at this time on the agenda. There's no action item on it. And no action item on any changes to co-pays for this plan year, at least this time. But I understand that you would like some further information possibly about that, that our next benefits committee...
That'd be great.
And then we do have a motion to, or we, you have approved to move the Quality Path back to the full board.
Yes.
Percent of this time.
All right, next agenda, announcements and updates. Anybody with any announcements or updates? Saying none? Future committee agenda items?
I think the Policy Committee looked at this, or might have talked about it, but to me, it's also happens here. We're looking for forty thousand here, forty thousand there, it all adds up. And outside of the political portion of this, we, uh, allowed domestic partner benefits a year or so ago. And now, the Supreme Court might change it again, but as of now, since, uh, gay marriage has been legalized, or at least is, is permitted in Wisconsin, to me, the, the offering of domestic partner benefits changes that question now. Now, anybody who's married can get benefits. So, to me, I'd like to find out if we say, if you're married, you have benefits, if you're not, you don't, what that might save us, and to look at changing that for next plan year as well. Again, because now, it's not a question of you can be married or not, it's a question of, do you want to get married? So, you understand my point of, had an agenda of, of re-looking at that issue, and since that legally has been changed, the, the, the environment we're under, perhaps look at changing that as well, then.
So, the eligibility changes with that?
Yeah, you're married or not, not, since we're no longer restricting any marriage in the state of Wisconsin at this point, until, unless the Supreme Court rerules again, which might happen in June or July, that they come out with a decision to, uh, have our policies reflect the change in law.
Is that something that for our next meeting you can have, or do you want to push that to...
We, we certainly can put announcements and statements.
Okay.
I mean, the mathematics is how many people have the necessary record coverage that aren't married.
Right.
All right. All right, any other agenda items or future agenda items? Next meeting, do we have any, uh, dates? Do we want to set a date, or do we want to just go and we'll have one set a date? Okay?
Um, the third Tuesday is the seventeenth, if anyone wants to be there. Just...
Okay.
Saint Patrick's Day.
No, uh, February.
February.
Well, February, we have something to talk about in February?
May.
It's too early.
Or is that too early?
But it depends, it's late in the month, yeah. We should have information on that.
So, do we want to go on the seventeenth, or do we want to push it back?
Push it out.
Okay, to the twenty-fourth?
Sure.
And the next Tuesday?
And again, the, the commitment there is that that's a work in progress.
Okay.
That's initial look at where things are at, that doesn't mean that...
Right, we'll just get an update.
Yeah.
Dr. Kell.
I forgot to mention that we do have a meet and confer on the funding levels scheduled for February the fifth.
Right.
From five thirty to seven o'clock.
Okay.
I would assume that we'll bring, um, some of the pieces that we've been talking about today to that meet and confer.
Right, no need to be excused for that meeting, I'm just telling you in advance. The February twenty-fourth. That's fine.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Sunday eight thirty?
Eight thirty, on the twenty-fourth.
Eight thirty on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, all right, meeting adjourned.
Are you driving up tomorrow?
Yes, I'm on horse.
Maybe, it depends on what happens today.